I would remind everyone to turn their cell phones on silent or turn them off. At this time, Bubba, would you like to say the invocation for us?
No problem.
We've had a commissioner's been a little under the weather. William, would you come up and say the invocation for us?
Let's pray. By God, we come to you this morning, Lord, seeking your guidance for the decisions made here today. Lord, we pray you keep your hand upon each and every decision made, that it be made for the veteran of this county and the citizens there. We ask you, in the name of Jesus, amen.
Amen. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Judge Jones?
Present.
Commissioner Scott? Commissioner Atkins?
Here.
Commissioner Blackburn?
Present.
We have quorum, we are ready to proceed. The next matter is a pledge of allegiance. I'd like to ask Sheriff Rodney Scott if he'd lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which you stand, one nation, for God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our goal.
Thank you, Sheriff. Next item is the approval of the minutes of the December 20th meeting of the Pike County Fiscal Court. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion.
We have a motion by Commissioner Atkins. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Blackburn, I think. Any question or discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scott? Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Blackburn?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes. The next item is the acknowledgement of receipt of the Pike County Clerk's 2023 budget. We have Pike County Clerk Darrell Pugh here. Mr. Pugh, would you like to come on up and discuss this?
Please proceed. I'd like to present the budget for 2023 to the fiscal court. Do they all have a copy?
They all have a copy.
Okay.
In this budget, it looks like you're asking for a $200,000 supplement from the fiscal court?
Yes, sir. The previous clerk indicated they would be a $200,000 to $300,000 surplus. You know, we're different than all the other surrounding counties. We had to zero out, so actually I put in $2,400 to get us started.
Well, the problem with this is we didn't subsidize the clerk's office when Rhonda Taylor was clerk. And I didn't find this out till yesterday. This was not budgeted. It's not in our budget. And if we provide a $200,000 subsidy to the clerk, that means I've got to cut $200,000 somewhere. Road Department, Public Works, senior citizens, fire departments, because the budget's got to match. And I checked with every county around us. Floyd County doesn't subsidize the clerk. Harlan County doesn't subsidize the clerk. McGoffin County gives them about $20,000 or $30,000 a year, but they get about that much back. Most county clerks end up returning money, like, as I understand, Chris Wall, Judge Williams tells me, that Chris Wall in Floyd County has given money back to the fiscal court every year. McGoffin County, it's about a wash. They give back, get back about what they give. Perry County, I talked to Scott Alexander yesterday, because I didn't find out about this till around 5:00 yesterday, that this subsidy was being requested. Scott Alexander in Perry County advised me that they pay the health insurance for the employees, but they end up getting more back than they pay to subsidize it. So I don't know, you know, what Clerk Taylor said was at her, one of the last meetings she came to, was that she planned on returning $200,000 to the fiscal court. We've not received that money. And obviously, if there was a subsidy, if there was a surplus there, you know, I've not seen a plan on what that money's to be used for. And I don't want to think that, you know, we should treat the clerk's office differently now than we treated it last year. If there's money to be returned, obviously, that's something, in my opinion, the clerk could come to the court with. We could discuss, but you're coming in here with no notice to the court. I don't know if you've talked to any of these gentlemen. I didn't find out about it till yesterday, and asking for $200,000, that I'm going to have to find a place to pull it out of the budget.
I've been clerk four days.
I understand.
I'm sure there's some tricks to the trade that I'm not aware of yet. I don't believe any of those other counties you mentioned have to zero out like Pike County does.
Well, they all have to balance their budgets. And you, I don't, you're, we're not a fee-pooling county, and some of these other counties are not fee-pooling counties too. Dan Mosley in Harlan County said that they don't subsidize. Jeff Dobson in Knott County told me yesterday they don't subsidize. I even called Eric Cheney, and about half of these judges are Republican, half of them are Democrat. Actually, most of them are Republican. And Eric Cheney, who's a Republican county judge, in Boyd County advised me that they don't subsidize the clerk any longer. So I don't know, you know, it's not that we're not willing to help the clerk, but you're asking for $200,000. It's not been budgeted, that we had, we found out about yesterday at 5:00. And it would have been nice to know that this request was going to be made, but we've also not seen a plan on where that money's going to be spent either. And you know, here's, here's my position on that, Darrell. We've been friends a long time, and you know, you raised the issue with Judge Hickman about the fact that we subsidized the sheriff. I don't see, the clerk's important, but the function that the sheriff serves is completely different than what the clerk. It's a public safety function. We've got deputies in all the schools with a drug problem. You know, we got one of the best narcotics units anywhere in Kentucky because the court has subsidized the sheriff. We've got more certified deputies in Pike County than any other county in eastern Kentucky because we subsidized them. So we saw what happened in Floyd County last summer and how important the sheriff's offices are. I mean, I'm willing to work with you on this, but to come in right after, you know, these guys have had one meeting and asked for $200,000 with no plan. We don't have, here's what I'm going to say, I don't have anybody to subsidize the fiscal court. If we run into financial problems, I don't have anybody to go to except the taxpayers. We, this court, since I've been judge, has not raised taxes. And if we run into a problem, maybe not this year, but down the road, I don't want to be in a position where I have to raise taxes. We're getting ready to have to talk about a real important issue affecting our 911 system, where the state police is raising the dispatch fee by about $200,000 a year. We don't have the money to pay that. So I can't support with such short notice, with no plan, a $200,000 supplement. If there's money to be returned to the court, I'll be willing to sit down with you. But you know, if, if we give you $200,000, that means I gotta cut it somewhere else. So, y'all have any questions or what's your thoughts on it?
What's it going to be used for?
Well, first of all, you know, there's been a problem with understaffing. You know, I don't, like I said, I didn't run the previous office. I've hired five more people. Three of them have already started training. You know, my intention is to open up Elkhorn a couple, two days a week, Phelps two days a week, and then Belfry at least three days a week. And at some point, I'd like to approach you all about working out something with the food stamp office that rents off of the county. As I understand, their lease, I believe, is up in July. I'd like to put a drive-through in over Belfry. You know, I think in time I'll do all those things, but I gotta have money to do it with. And like you'd say, you don't have anybody to go to. You're who I go to, you know, for additional money. And back in the day, you know, with Lily and Pearl, they had a relationship with the courts. She would get supplement money and then pay it back. I don't, I don't think this is a gift. It's a, it's an advance, as I understand it.
I mean, if you needed advance to cover payroll, that's what they did in Harlan County. They gave about a $20,000, $24,000 advance, but the clerk's paying it back. And you know, there's a big difference between when Lily and Pearl was clerk and the county was getting $12.5 million a year at one point in coal and mineral severance. We don't have that luxury. And you're talking about understaffing. Fabian Little's one man short on every road lot. We're going to have to spend about $2 million of what's left of our ARPA money on bridges. We've got bridges that are ready to collapse. I mean, these are, we've got school buses going across bridges that pose a serious concern about the safety. I mean, you know, we've got the county in good financial shape. As you know, it was not that way four years ago. You know, the audits were horrible. We lost our credit rating. And you know, we're getting ready to have to deal with this landfill and come up with $7 million to do the first phase of construction. So I mean, you know, $200,000 may not sound like a lot of money in the grand scheme of things, but I've got to cut it somewhere else if we give that to the clerk. My proposal would be that if there is money, like Clerk Taylor said, $200,000 to $300,000, it will be returned to the court. If there's that much money there, you can come back to the court and we can discuss. That would be my preference, but to simply say, here's $200,000, I can't support that. These gentlemen may want to support that, but I just, it's got to come from somewhere.
You know, in this budget, you just can't throw out $200,000. I'm going to have to figure somewhere to cut the employees, which I've, I've got one with 100 instead of the 200. But you know, I went, I took, Ms. Taylor had her word. She said $200,000 to $300,000. I went with the low number.
You know, we didn't subsidize her. We let her keep some surplus money, but we did not take money out of the county general fund and give to her at any point in time during the four years that I was judge and she was clerk.
I think, I think most people would agree, though, that providing three to five additional jobs and providing the convenience of opening these offices up would save people their time and gas money and would, in benefit, would benefit the county.
There's, there's no question it would be beneficial. But again, it would be beneficial if I had another weed mower in every road lot. It would be beneficial if I had another guy to run snowplows, to help pull ditches and things like that. We're understaffed. I mean, Paul, Paul, how many men do you have in Public Works? So we've got seven employees in Public Works to take care of 100-plus buildings and pieces of property. Fire departments, senior citizens, community centers, courthouses, parks, playgrounds. It's over 100 pieces of property in it, Paul. And we've got seven people. And we're getting ready to have to spend a bunch of money that's not budgeted on some of these community centers that no money was set aside for, that need roofs, HVAC. How much money you think we're going to have to spend on some of these, Paul? What about the rest of the, the buildings? Some of the other community centers, though, need other repairs. And we've got ball fields like Long Fort Park, Hardy Park, the ball field at Phelps that are in horrible shape, some of which still have flood damage that has not been cleaned up yet. And Darrell, you know, we, we've bit the bullet out of our budget. We've got $20 million in damage to county roads, and we've pulled out, how much money, Frankie, so far out of our budget?
In the January and July flood, we've spent about $4.5 million.
Yeah, that was not budgeted. So I mean, it's put a big dent in the county's budget, because we've only got, what, 1.4 back from the state? So we're still, we're still $3 million short that we've been able to pull out of the budget, because we've managed our resources. But my proposal would be that we don't pass this budget with, with a supplement. This is a budget that runs from January to January, and then when you see how much money that you're going to have as a surplus that was left over, then you can come back to the court and we could look at a modification at that time. We've got two more quarters of occupational net profit and coal mineral severance to come in. We don't know how those are going to be. They could be up, they could be down. We don't know how our solid waste and tax collections are going to be at the end of the day. And you know, I was getting ready to point out here in a minute, our solid waste accounts at the lowest it's been in years because we've been out so much money on diesel fuel with the price of diesel fuel. We've not raised the solid waste rates. And I think this court agrees with me that we don't want to have to raise rates. And you know, we're, you got Waste Management over in Mingo County that put a fuel surcharge on their solid waste system. We've not done that. And we've blown through our road department's solid waste diesel budget already, and we're just now halfway through the fiscal year. So I'll leave it up to these guys, what they want to do. I just think that with such little notice, a $200,000 supplement out of our budget, when we don't know how much money's left over from the last term of the clerk, would be fiscally irresponsible at this point.
So how do we remedy that? Because I don't know.
Well, we would change, I would propose that you change that to zero subsidy. And once we see what kind of sup, you know, what kind of surplus you have, you can come back to the court with a plan. I think the court would be willing to work with you on that.
As I understand it, I have to have the exact, or not the exact, but the maximum number of employees I got.
Well, I mean, I, you know, we have to have a budget too. And these budgets-
I'm just saying, if I go to zero, I'm not going to be able to, I'll have to come back before then if I want to add employees, if I start doing better.
Well, I mean, we'd like to add employees too, but we can't do it. And you know, what I would propose to you would be floating some of these folks to these other offices as opposed to hiring new people, because you know, you're still going to be paying health insurance. You're still going to be paying pension costs for every person you hire, workers' comp. So you know, my proposal would be, rather than looking at hires, is potentially floating some of these people. Because you know, I'd like to hire a bunch of people in the road department. And that's a, that's an argument that I got, a disagreement I had with the former clerk is this issue of hiring people in one office, when we've had to lay people off and reduce, you know, we're, we're running on a skeleton crew in Public Works. We're personally short in each lot. We're at least six employees short in, in the road department. And you know, these guys will get, are going to find out here pretty soon, when the weeds start growing, that people are going to be mad because weeds ain't been cut. So my, my recommendation and what I would suggest to the court, and they can outvote me if they want to, is that we, we don't provide in this initial budget a fiscal court supplement, just like we didn't for the prior clerk. But that if there's money that you have to return, that we can come back and look at this and do an amended budget. Because you know, it's going to be really hard for us, maybe not so much this year, but in a couple of years, this thing is going to get really tight, because there's not going to be federal money coming in. And I just think, you know, the, the decisions we make now are going to impact this before the end of this term of court.
When is Rhonda supposed to give that money back?
The money should be in the account, but-
It has to go through an audit.
Yeah, there has to be an audit to determine what her final balance was. And then that way they'll know the exact amount too.
But you know, if, if the court wants to do this right now, then that, that I would ask you all to tell me where, where you all would propose that we amend the budget to cut it out of our budget, because it's not budgeted right now.
Well, I've got a, a second one that's, that's for a hundred supplement.
Well, I mean, again, it's 100, I've got to cut out of the road department, or Public Works, or solid waste, or emergency management, or you know, senior citizens, or fire departments.
And I don't know if I can, if, if we can tie the two together, but if I do the one for the 100, I mean, even if you agree to this, I don't know exactly when I would get the money. Can we tie it pending to, to that?
No, because once we pass this, that means it's committed to court to giving $100,000 to the clerk, and we didn't do that with the prior court. As I said, these guys may have a different opinion on it, but-
But it's just a loan, right? I'm, I'm supposed to pay it back. It's not that you give it to them.
It's not a loan if it's put in here as a supplement, because there's nothing that says it has to be paid back. The clerk's supposed to, as I understand it, return 25% of their fees to the, to the fiscal court. Is that right, Frankie?
Right.
Now, that's automatic. I mean, you all get that regardless.
So I mean, we're willing to, I would be proposed that we wait and see how much money's left over and come back and look at this when we see what Rhonda's surplus was.
Well, can I defer a minute and talk to my bookkeeper and see what we-
If something you want to add on that?
Yeah. So nobody knows when Rhonda's supposed to bring that back or whatever?
Just when the audit's done.
How long does it take for an audit?
Frankie, when you think the audit will be done on that?
The clerk, probably, probably June, about mid-year, maybe?
Can we, can we rephrase it from a supplement to an advance and then get, and then when that money comes in?
I mean, I still have to cut it, I still have to cut it somewhere else. Because it's not, this is not budgeted, this is not in the fiscal court's budget. Our budget goes, is different than your budget. Our budget goes from July 1st to June 30th. So the budget that we're operating under right now did not, I guess, I don't think we put any kind of supplement in there for, for the clerk last year, did we? So it's not in the fiscal court's budget to do this. And that's why I'm saying, if you would, you know, June, if, if the audit's done in June, that gives you six months of your, of your, your fiscal year to, you know, to come back to the court. This is how much money the clerk's going to be able to return in surplus, and you know, could I get some of it? Give us a plan. But I just don't know that it's fair to the fiscal court, because there's nobody to bail us out. There's nobody for us to go to for money except the taxpayer. And I'll make a prediction right now that before the end of this four years, the budget's going to get a lot tighter, because everything's getting more expensive, vehicles, fuel. You know, we've had to raise salaries, those kind of things, health insurance. We're, I think Reggie told me today, we're spending $3.5 million a year on health insurance, workers' comp, general liability, about $3.5 million. And there's nobody for us to go to when that goes up. I gotta either cut it in one place or another when I, I gotta give these guys a budget in May. And you know, the money's got to come from somewhere. And if you need an advance, I would support an advance that would, you know, help you cover the overhead till you get some money in. But you know, the clerks have had it a little bit easier, because the legislature raised all the fees for deeds and all the filings and registrations and stuff about two years ago that really generated a ton of money for most clerk's offices.
Well, can I, can I have a few minutes from my bookkeeper and come back up?
Sure. I mean, what y'all want to do?
Call me back up.
Our next meeting, what, is December 17th?
January 17th.
I mean, January 17th, sorry. Do you want to try to figure something out?
I think I have to have my budget in by the 15th.
He's going to have it in by the 15th.
Well, if you want to do, if you want to let everybody else talk, and then us try to figure something out. I'm willing to help you any way we can, but I, you know, I don't want to, I don't want to put a crunch on everybody else, but I'm not sitting here saying, no, not help you. So we'll try to figure something out to help you.
And I think all of us are willing to help, but like I said, if we give, you know, what they did in, in some of these counties is they gave, they advanced some money to the clerks to help them cover payroll on the stipulation that it would be repaid in short order. And then if there's a big surplus there, I don't have a problem working with you if there's a plan. But it's hard for me to explain to the public why we got, we're, you know, our responsibility is to the fiscal court. When we've got a shortage of employees in Public Works, a shortage of employees in the road department, it's sort of hard for me to justify, you know, another county office hiring people.
Well, I'm, you know, I'm trying to open these, these extra offices back up.
I mean, we'd like to help the senior citizens, open the Phelps and Marbone senior citizens. I mean, we're, we're 25,000 less people than we had 40 years ago. Our coal service tax is 80% less than it was a decade ago. I mean, there's a lot of things I'd like to be able to do for the fiscal court.
You know, I'm not just trying to spend this money. I'm trying to generate new revenue and keep more at home. You know, we're way underperforming compared to the counties.
I agree with that, and I think you're on the right track by doing that.
Oh, can you give me a few minutes, because we got to, we're going to have to take two or three employees off?
Why would you, I don't know why you'd have to lay anybody off until, because-
Well, if we just take that out of the budget, it doesn't work, right? Am I correct? Yeah, give us five minutes and we'll come out there.
That's fine.
Thanks.
Sheriff, would you like to come up and discuss your budget?
Judge, commissioners, congratulations.
Sheriff, please proceed.
All right, well, as you can see, I got a, my budget, I got a $193 deficit, mainly because we haven't received unmined coal in two years. The computer program went down, and anyway, we're supposed to have it by March.
As I understand it, the state messed up and didn't send that money out.
Right.
Or didn't collect it or something like that.
Yeah. So that's the biggest part of what that is, is we didn't get, you know, none in '22, we didn't get '21s. We're supposed to get '21s and '22s by March, the way I understand it.
Any idea how much that's going to be? Any idea how much that's going to be?
I have no idea.
And actually, the supplement you've asked for, for the court, would you tell, just so the public understands, where that money goes that, that the fiscal court provides to the sheriff and what it's used for?
That money goes, well, goes to supplement my office altogether, because you know, we, we can't generate no revenue other than basically serving papers, collecting taxes. That's serving process. That's, that's where our money comes from. You know, we get 4% of what's on the, what's on your tax bill, what the county gets, and then we get 3% of what the school board gets, you know, to collect. So you know, that, that's basically our budget.
And you're policing the biggest county in Kentucky for about, for less than $3 million?
Yes.
Now, let me ask you this, how many certified deputies do you have right now?
12, I think, 12, 13.
I think that's probably the most the Pike County Sheriff's ever had.
Yeah. Well, Judge, we've lost two, three, four, we've lost four or five, just because, you know, these school boards starting their own-
You lost one to Pikeville?
Lost one to Pikeville, Pikeville Independent. You know, they started their own school resource officer, police station, police officers, really. We lost one to Floyd County, or two to Floyd County. You know, we, we just couldn't pay them what they're paying them, and you know, you can't blame them.
You've got one of the best narcotics groups in Kentucky. It's one of the most experienced retired state troopers, retired FBI task force officers, retired, or former DEA task force officers.
And these, these guys still work with them. And you know, anytime it, there's any seized funds, you know, then, which, you know, COVID's been going on. There haven't been a whole lot of court, so you know, things are starting to pick back up now. But you know, anytime there's any seized assets, then you know, our office gets a percentage of that.
If, let me ask you this, if the fiscal court did not supplement your office, would you have to lay certified officers off?
Yes.
How many would you have to lay off, you think, of the 12?
Oh, man, probably at least, at least five, probably.
Five of the 12 if we didn't supplement, so that would only leave you seven.
Right. You know, time you pay the salary, their insurance, their retirement, you know, you're looking probably $75,000, $80,000 per.
Y'all have any questions about the sheriff's budget or anything, Commissioner Scott? And you could not police a county 888 square miles with seven certified officers?
No. And we've probably got 10 volunteers. I, I couldn't make it without them, you know? We, we still couldn't do what we do without them.
No, there's no way. You couldn't, ball games, public events, serving papers.
Leading funerals, you know, whatever, it doesn't matter. We couldn't make it without them.
And I, I just want to say something. You know, Sheriff John Hunt's a friend of mine in Floyd County, and we know what happened back last summer with their department with Deputy Petrie. And every day, your officers, your deputies put their lives on the line. And I don't know that the fiscal court subs, that helped the sheriff's office any until I became judge. Is that accurate?
You, you have been very, you and, and the courts have been very good to us, no, no question about that. I mean, I know, you know, always before they did get a supplement, but- I mean, um, I know, you know, always before they did get a supplement, but other than that, I don't, I don't think they hardly got anything. Sharon, Sharon has helped us tremendous. You know, anytime there's a grant for something where it's, uh, you know, bullet for, bulletproof vest, uh, off-duty guns, uh, you know, anything that comes along that we can get.
Vehicles, body armor.
Vehicles.
Firearms.
You know, new radio system.
New radio system, radio, computers for the cars.
Ever since I've been there, that's, you know, we've tried to do more and more and more for safety and, uh, you know, what it's all about.
Well, being a parent, and I know, um, Commissioner Atkins has kids in the schools, county school system. At one time, I know, uh, both Commissioner Scott, Commissioner Blackburn had kids in the county school system. And right now, all the high schools, as I understand it, have school resource officers.
Yes.
That are deputy sheriffs.
Yes. In, in order to be a school resource officer, you, you got to be a certified police officer.
And, you know, um, I would hope that at some point the federal government would help subsidize.
Yeah.
But they're not. And Reed Atkins, our superintendent in the board has...
He, he's been very, he's, he's helped us, uh, you know, with a grant that, that helps pay the salaries on, on these guys.
But in reality, with, the, the $240,000 probably doesn't cover all the costs associated with those.
That's just basically salaries, you know, that, that don't, that's not counting the gas, uh, the car, uniforms, uh, whatever. That's just basically, basically for salary.
It looks like you're just raising it, what, $100,000 from last budget?
No, actually, the surplus went down, uh, $70,000, I think it was, because I knew I had a girl retiring, and I went ahead and asked for enough to cover, I went at 470 last year?
It was five.
500, okay. Yeah, actually, it's went, the supplement went down. Because, uh, in advance, I knew I had a, my bookkeeper was retiring and I had to go ahead and get somebody in there to go through the tax season and all that. So I used that to, to pay the extra girl.
That's the same thing we did when we, we brought Mr. Jackson in as emergency management director and it's discussion that we've already started having with Mr. Stacy about, you know, if you've got somebody that's handling the money, you can't just bring somebody in off the street with no experience and turn that kind of, you know, because the state auditors would be not happy.
That's true.
And I want to commend you on your audits, all being clean, um, not one penny of money that's not been accounted for. And I think that's remarkable, given how much money comes through your office every year.
Any other questions?
Is there a motion to acknowledge, uh, the Pike County Sheriff's 2023 calendar year budget?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Blackburn. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Atkins. Any question or discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scott? Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Blackburn?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes.
Commissioners, thank you, appreciate it. Look forward to working with you.
Thank you, Sheriff. Mr. Pugh, come on back up. How are you right now in terms of your, uh, your bank account in terms of payroll and things like that?
Well, you know, we hold back a week, so I don't have to make a payroll till the end of January. They're, they're getting paid the middle of this month for their 15th of December to 31st. So, I mean, I don't have it right now, but I should have it by the end of the month.
And we've got another court meeting on the 17th. So my position would be is if he needs an advance, we could, because it's a regular meeting, you could come back to the court if you don't have the money to cover payroll?
Yeah. The, the problem with having to go to zero, we had to cut this to 22 employees. And I don't think that I can add any employees, like go to, back to 24 without coming back and amending my budget. Is that correct?
But if you're going to have in four or five months, you're going to know, Doug, you, you were with Ron De Taylor's office. So you think there's going to be a surplus when that audit's done? How much do you think it's going to be? Can, can you come up to the microphone so the TV can? Ballpark. So, so you think there's a $100,000 surplus? So, I mean, my position would be, and I would submit to these guys, that if there's 100,000 left, I would have no problem working with the clerk to help. Because that's money the clerk's office generated. We get there 25% anyway. Back to the fiscal court, if there's a surplus, I would have no problem working with that. But I think you understand with doing the budget that it's not budgeted in our budget. And, um, I mean,
Okay. To get a, a true number on that.
So, so right now, the money's in the account. The only thing that's left to come out of that would be the payroll that would be coming up.
The previous payroll and any POs or something that still has the December date that we may not have received yet, we have to take care of.
Was there a bunch of furniture purchase down there?
There was some furniture purchased. Chairs only.
Chairs only, okay.
The chairs that were there were probably 25 years old.
Yeah, this one right here is, somebody commented on, on the...
They were way back when, when they did the addition of the courthouse, that's the same chairs that they had when they did the courthouse.
This one's about had it too, so.
No, it, it was probably 20, 25-year-old chairs.
Right. So would that be acceptable if?
Yeah, the, the point I was trying to make is with this budget, zero supplement budget, I only have 22 employees. On the previous one, I had 24. And, and there again, I'm going from, I don't have any experience in that, but I understand that I have to resubmit a budget if I'm going to have more than 22 employees. That's the number that has to stay fast. So I'll have to come back sometime in July and ask, because I can't open all those offices with 22 employees.
Well, like I said, um, my position, just mine, these guys may have a different view, is that it would be for us more financially prudent to wait to see how much surplus money was there. Um, because me, I can't hardly justify the clerk hiring more employees when the fiscal court is running the Public Works Department with seven, taking care of 100 pieces of property and buildings, and the Road Department taking care of 1,000 miles of roads down six employees.
You know, I, I agree with all that, but I got to have a budget in by the 15th. This was my only opportunity to present it, so.
And, and I'll be happy to work with you on this. If, if you come back on the 17th and say, I can't make payroll, I'll make a motion to give you an advance to help you cover that, just like they did in Harlan County.
Yeah. I think, I think there's, um, appropriated money to do that. We don't, we can get money for advances other than the court. Those other counties can't.
And, and let me say this about those clerk, those county clerks' offices. The fiscal court pays the pa, the power bill and the utilities for the clerk's office in Belfry. Is that right for that building? We pay the one for the one in Phelps. Um, you know, we...
I think we have a phone bill at Elkhorn City and that's it.
And, and the fiscal court, it's not like the fiscal court's not helping the clerk's office because we're picking up all, all the utility bills. As I understand it, we pick up the utility bill for your clerk's office here. Is that right, Doug?
Everything's at phone.
Everything's at phone. The fiscal court already pays that. So we pay the insurance on the vehicle for the, for the clerk's office. One thing that we had mentioned is, is something that you may want to look at is, is, is looking at a different health insurance. We could have saved $60-some thousand over about an 18-month period. We tried to help find a different health plan for the, for the former clerk.
Yeah, I definitely want to be, have that opportunity.
And, and it may be something that, you know, you could look at putting those employees. I don't know if it's beneficial or, or not, if it would put them on our group and you could reimburse us for that if it's cheaper. Those are just some of the things that we could do to try to save some money for you that would free up money.
Well, like I said, this was my only opportunity. I got to have a budget in. I just want to make clear that I'm going to have to, if I'm going to open the offices like I intend, I'll have to come back in, in probably July, uh, or whenever we get this money to, or, uh, to let somebody know that I'm moving from 22 employees to 24 employees. Because I can't do it without getting a, approved budget.
We can, we can, you can amend this budget and submit it at any time and we can have it at any court meeting. If we need to do a special meeting, I'll, I'll be happy to call it. One of these guys, I'm sure will be happy to call a special meeting.
All right. What's next?
All right. So is, we have the amended general term order here, uh...
May I add one more thing?
Yes, sir.
If, if there is any additional money, surplus money left over from any accounts, I'd like to be considered for it?
Well, that's why I just said that my proposal would be if there's a surplus in your account, or you're talking about in your, in the clerk's...
Well, I was talking about any newfound money the, the court might have, I'd like to be considered for.
Well, I can tell you there's not any newfound money that, uh, you know, we, we don't, we don't get to buy lottery tickets. Uh, we, we know what's coming in and, um... In the four years I've been here, we've not had any newfound money except the COVID money, and that's been used for things like radio system for our first responders and fire departments, a new radio system for the sheriff's office, $100,000 for each fire department rescue squad because we had groups with no turnout gear. We spent some of it on the road system. Uh, none of it's been spent on personnel or hiring people. It's all been spent on things that we otherwise wouldn't have been able to do. And about $2 million of what's, uh, is, Frankie, the $2 million, have you already transferred that out for the bridge program? So there's $2 million that we're going to have to spend of the ARPA money on bridges that are a public safety hazard. So, um, if there's any surplus money that the clerk's office have, has after the budget's done, I'm sure we sit down and work with you on that.
Thanks.
Right. Is there a motion to approve the amended, uh, budget of the Pike County Clerk, uh, effective, uh, January 6, 2023, for the sum of, uh, $1,348,734.16?
Motion.
A motion by Commissioner Atkins. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Scott. Any other question or discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scott? Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Blackburn?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes. So I'm going to go ahead and sign this one and give it to Lisa. If you'll hand me another copy of it just for my file. Um, and we'll get that to you and it'll be ready to go today. Thank you, sir.
Are we done?
You are finished, sir. Thank you. Look forward to working with you and I think you're on the right track by trying to increase revenue. The next item is approval of appointments to the Pike County Pike TV Board of Directors. And under the bylaws, we already have Judge Hickman who's serving on that. Which commissioner, one of the commissioners, is it about, is it the, is it a commissioner or magistrate under the bylaws? Commissioner or magistrate, which one of you all would want to fill that vacancy? Commissioner Robertson, former Commissioner Ronnie Robertson was the, was the court member on the Pike TV Board of Directors. Would one of you all, which one would, would want to fill that position?
What's the maiden or?
Well, it's the Pike TV, there's a board of directors that runs it. Pike TV is funded by the fiscal court. Hospital puts some money in. There's different stakeholders like U-Pike, I think. Um, so, um, there's a board of directors and there's two vacancies. Uh, I'm going to renominate Deputy Judge Hickman. And I was going to, and there's a member of the court, like I said, it was former Commissioner Ronnie Robertson. So I was just going to ask which one of you all want to serve on that position? It's, they meet, they meet Wednesday at 4 o'clock at the, sometime, usually at the end of the month. Because Commissioner Atkins is... There's, there's more stuff that y'all go get to. All right. So I would nominate Pike County Deputy Judge Executive Reggie Hickman and Pike County Commissioner Ronald Scott to fill the vacancies on the Pike TV, uh, Board of Directors. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Atkins. Any question or discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scott? Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Blackburn?
Yeah.
Judge Jones?
Yes. Now, the next thing is on the Pike T, the Pike County Trail Advisory Board. Uh, Commissioner Scott has actually been up and looked at the trails that are being developed. Um, I've not been up there, it's been, it's been a little while since I've got to have a little procedure done on my neck next week. I've tried not to, not to jar myself too much. Uh, Commissioner Scott, you want to tell us what your opinion was of seeing the, the trail that was being built up there and stuff? Attorney, attorney's mic.
I didn't have it on. I took a trip up with Ronnie, uh, I don't know, months or so ago or something like that there and, uh, and, uh, Jerry and Mrs. Smallwood. We all rode around probably about four or five hours. And, uh, there's a lot of good things up there.
Um, you know, one of the big things up there was that, uh, Mr. Atkins was able to do is there's a, there's a, Cam has a part of that that's still under bond, that there's got to be reclaimed. And he was able to work it out to get it reclaimed to, we were able to get the state to agree to let them reclaim it for air use, uh, which is going to save us a bunch of money. Jerry had a connection, was able to get that done. But, uh, you know, Jerry's done a remarkable job of getting some of these leases done. And it's a technically, it's a big challenge that people don't realize, uh, with the trail system because, you know, in West Virginia, you didn't have near as many state, for the whole Hattie McCoy Trail System, you only had, what was it, Whitey 90 some property owners or something like that? Yeah. I mean, you've, you've got, you've got more property owners than that just on, on Elkhorn Creek to, to have to deal with. Uh, and the state funded it all. And we've been doing this with, with our economic development money. Cliff's done a great job of building trails, marking trails, mapping trails. Jerry's been putting the, the paperwork side of it together, which is no small task, Jerry, and I want, I want to thank you for the hard work you put in. You all, on this trail advisory board, like, uh, Dennis Gibbs is a member of that board. They're not paid. Jerry was a, a member of that board and went to every meeting for three years without getting paid a penny. I mean, put hundreds of hours in volunteering on this. And, you know, this trail system was talked about a lot, but we're finally making progress on it. Jerry, when do you think we'll be in a position to open this segment of it up, the first segment? Late spring, early summer. I want to say something that, uh, me and Reggie went over to look at the Spearhead Trail System. And they've spent a ton of money. They've got, we were there, people were coming in from, is it South Carolina or Georgia, like nine motor homes pulling side-by-sides and yeah, it's had an economic impact over there. And the interesting thing was when they opened the Spearhead Trail System, they've got about 200 miles of trails now. Is that right, Jerry? They first opened, they opened there 20 miles. What are we going to have when we open? So we're going to be somewhere three or four times bigger opening up than what Spearheads. And, and one of the things I want to point out is the Spearhead Trail System's already talked to us about trying to connect the two systems together. So if we can do that, you can get on it at Flatwoods and ride all the way into Virginia. That's a big deal. We've already got people calling wanting to know when it's going to open or what they can do to get permits and stuff. So I think it's a... Hey, Jerry, come up to the microphone because I'm not... Why don't you go over that again because I'm not sure... Why don't you go over that again, because I'm not sure anybody could hear that on, on Pike TV. Just go over how many miles of trails you think we're gonna have when we open up. And you said we probably can open up in late spring, early summer.
Yes, sir.
Somewhere between fifty and a hundred miles initially.
We should have that map to, to know for sure in the next forty-five to ninety days, but we'll be over fifty miles somewhere there and, between there and a hundred miles.
So, so the, the Trail Advisory Board, the, the people aren't paid. We've had, was former Commissioner Jason Tackett and Ronnie Robertson were the two fiscal court members on that Trail Advisory Board. And Trail Advisory Board doesn't have any binding authority to do anything, but what they basically have been doing is making recommendations to the fiscal court. One of the things that we'll have to address is like the rules for the trail system, you know, whether you, helmets or coolers allowed, all those things, if seat belts are required, if they're installed, are they required? We're gonna have to deal with things like how we patrol it. Probably gonna have to work with the sheriff to make some ATV or a two available to them that they need to patrol it.
That's correct.
You're gonna have to designate like at least one or two emergency sites where we can get a helicopter in if somebody got hurt. There's a, there's a bunch of those issues. How much you're gonna charge for permits for local residents versus out of state or out of county residents? So there's two vacancies on there. I can't remember if the ordinance says two members of the fiscal court, if it's two commissioners. Do you remember, Reggie?
Judge.
Two commissioners. So let me look at it here. So under the, under the ordinance that we passed back in twenty twenty-two, the advisory board is nine, fourteen members, two commissioners that I appoint, and then one member being appointed by the commissioner not serving on the advisory board. Six people nominated by the judge, ten, I'm sorry, by the judge executive. Then their staggered terms. And then... So... So which two of you all would want to serve on the Trail Advisory Board? I think it's gonna be meeting once a month, Jerry. Is that right?
We've been, been meeting once every two weeks.
Once every two weeks.
What time's the meeting?
Usually it's, what, one o'clock?
We've been meeting on Wednesdays at eleven AM.
Eleven o'clock.
A schedule conflict for me, and I'd really like to be on that. I can't, can't hardly do that. I can't, you know.
I can, I probably can.
I volunteer too.
And that gives you an appointment to the board. All right, so I would nominate Commissioner Orville Blackburn and Commissioner Ronald Scott to serve on the Pike County Trails Advisory Board. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Atkins. Any questions or discussions? See none. Ma'am Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Blackburn?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes. All right. Congratulations or condolences. We'll see which one it is. It's a lot of work.
If I may add, it's very important we have commissioners on this Trail Advisory Board because the Trail Advisory Board, exactly what the second word says, it's advisory. We can't make any concrete decisions to spend large amounts of money or to purchase equipment. So with commissioners being on the board, at each board meeting, we discuss where the trail system's at, where we need to go forward, what needs to be done, what monies need to be spent. And we vote in the Trail Advisory Board meeting of what we think should be accomplished. And then the commissioners need to take those decisions back to fiscal court and get approved by a full vote of the fiscal court, what the Trail Advisory Board needs.
Do we have a list of the current members? Can you go get it for me real quick? Because while we're doing, doing this... Yeah. Because, I mean, I wanna see, because we had one person that was on the board, that was vice chairman, that resigned, has not been to a meeting in some time. While we're doing it, I wanna go ahead and fill that position. And I wanna see who's currently on the board. Why, how many people are, are actively participating still?
It was, it was increased in May of last year, twenty twenty-two to fourteen, at a court meeting.
Right now, it's fourteen members, two commissioners, and the person nominated. And the reason you can't have three commissioners on it is because it constituted a court of the fiscal court. Ten by the judge executive, and that, the numbers, they're, they're not adding up.
Personnel and Finance Director Justin Maynard, I've approached him with that. The number of ten members needs to be increased to eleven. And I mean, the new code that he's working on, that'll be, that'll be correct.
We need to, we need to amend this ordinance. So Mr. Downey, would you, Colonel Downey, would you get me a amended ordinance to clarify this? Because there is a, there is a mistake in there in terms of the math, because when it was amended, because it's, it says the advisory board is composed of fourteen members, two commissioners, a member appointed by the commissioner not serving on the board, and then ten nominated by the judge and approved by the fiscal court. So we need to clarify that. There's a, there's a one, we need to clarify that it's eleven members appointed by the judge and not, and confirmed by the fiscal, and approved by the fiscal court.
That would make, make a credit, yes.
So that's just a typo that somehow got in there. So how many vacancies do we have right now?
I know if Sharon Genie brings the list back. I think it's five, maybe six.
Right now, there's five or six vacancies.
As we increased, after we increased it to fourteen, it is, because once again, as you told the public, this is a volunteer position. They're not paid. It's sometimes hard to have fourteen people to volunteer a couple, a half hours.
Show up twice a month.
And right now, we need to meet right at twice a month. For a long time, back in twenty and part of twenty-one, we were meeting weekly to, to get this going. But we spread it out to two weeks now. We may, as it gets going, be able to go, go to thirty days. But right now, we probably need to meet every two weeks.
See, well, I'm gonna pass over this. If y'all okay with it, we'll pass over the rest until Genie gets back. Because there's, those vacancies, I'd like to nominate them and get them filled so we can get this thing rolling. You okay with that? So we'll move on, Jerry, until Genie gets back with that list. And I'd like to ask CJ to come up, Mr. Childers, and anybody else if need, or Tim wants to come on up and discuss this. This is a big issue. I alluded to this in the last meeting last year. I understand that the fiscal court, when we started the nine-one-one system, looked at the cost and feasibility of putting their own system in. But at the time, they felt it was better to let the state police do all the nine-one-one dispatches. Is that right, CJ?
When nine-one-one first started, when it was basic nine-one-one system at its infancy, the sheriff's office was answering nine-one-one calls. Once it went enhanced, they looked at doing our own system versus KSP made them a really good deal at the time. It was real cost effective for KSP to do the nine-one-one dispatch, and that's where it's been ever since.
Do we pay for that? What, does the nine-one-one board pay the state police for that?
Yes.
How much do they pay?
Uh, we've been paying two hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars a year. And they upped it, this last, this past July, we received a notice that they were going to up it. They originally upped it to five hundred and thirteen thousand, and I have negotiated with them and got it down to four hundred and sixty-three thousand and change.
So it's still about a two hundred thousand dollar increase?
Yes.
Tell, tell me what that four hundred and sixty-three thousand would cover. What, what, what does that pay for?
That pays, we pay for five dispatchers out of the nineteen total that Post Nine is supposed to employ. We pay full benefits, pay everything for five of those dispatchers. The other dispatchers are paid for by KSP or other counties. That also covers the phone system that they use. We cover the nine-one-one trunk lines going into that dispatch. We cover the radio system that, they just, KSP just installed a new radio system a year and a half ago. And the old radio system, KSP did not have a monthly bill on. It's like they're leasing the systems now. Instead of purchasing the systems, they're doing a lease type setup on the phone systems and on the radio system and the CAD system and the dispatch. So they're passing that cost off to us as well. So when they upgraded the system, we're paying a portion of the radio system part of it. We're paying a portion of the CAD system part of it, and we're paying a portion of the phone system part of it. Where it's all like a lease type for equipment now, because every five years, I believe they told me, every five years, they, the way they've got it worked up, every five years, they're completely redoing all the equipment. That way they keep up to date. Because the last equipment was almost twenty years old when it was, when they replaced it.
So, so, so where does the money, we backed up. People know what emergency management does. They may not know exactly what nine-one-one does. You're the nine-one-one coordinator.
Yes.
Uh, would you explain to the public? Because, I mean, this is sort of a hidden thing. People know if there's a wreck or somebody's sick, they pick the phone up and call nine-one-one.
Right.
Yep. Let me ask you a question.
Okay.
There's nothing says we have to have a nine-one-one system?
No.
We could do away with it?
Yes.
Would it be a bad thing?
Yes. It, it would be a very bad thing. Right now, nine-one-one, the calls of nine-one-one, you have a one central, small three-digit number that gets you to a nine-one-one dispatch center where they will answer the call. They do what they call emergency medical dispatch. If it's an, if it's a medical call, where they will try to walk somebody through how to deal with the emergency until responders arrive to try to increase people's chances of survival. It also, we pay for the communications. Nine-one-one takes care of all the communications for eye service and repair, all the communications for all the police, fire, and EMS in Pike County out of nine-one-one. That includes tower sites, that includes land lease, tower space rental and some towers, and land lease for other towers.
So, so, so our nine-one-one board is responsible for all nine-one-one dispatching?
Yes.
Paying for that?
Yes.
Paying for the phone lines and equipment used to do the nine-one-one system?
Yes.
Now, when you mentioned enhanced nine-one-one, what's the difference between that and regular nine-one-one?
Uh, basic nine-one-one, it was nothing more than basically like caller ID. When you dial nine-one-one, they got a name and a phone number. The enhanced system works with a mapping system, works with our GIS department. And it actually puts a point on a map in front of the dispatcher showing when you call nine-one-one, it's going, it's putting a point on a map showing them how to get to that address. So they can help direct responders to get to that address more efficiently. If a responder, if a responder has a question, they can contact dispatch over the radio and say, you know, for instance, what's my quickest route to get to this? And they can actually, dispatch can actually help because of the enhanced nine-one-one system. And on set, when the enhanced works with the cell phones, because it works with the GPS units that's embedded in all new cell phones. So when you dial nine-one-one from a cell phone, it shows where you're at on the map of your cell phone, shows where your cell phone's at. So if you're...
So if somebody's sick and they call nine-one-one, they can't talk or something, it shows where that call's coming from?
Yes. Shows exactly where that call's coming from.
And that's, we have one of the best systems you can have, I'd say.
Yes. Pike County, and Pike County's nine-one-one and emergency management is, has led for years, a lot of counties in the state on how to do things and pushing the envelope on being better and better and better for the public.
Now, let me ask you something else. As part of your list of things you've got here, you all handle all nine, all nine, all emergency communications?
Yes.
So like if there's a train derailment that we had up at Drafton?
Yes.
Plane crashes?
Yes.
Floods?
Yes.
Tornadoes, whatever?
Yes.
And one of the things I wanna just mention about that is what Tim does, Tim Fields, that grew up with me at Virgie, that, well, it's Floyd County's, we hired Floyd County's Emergency Management Director away, but Tim's our GIS coordinator.
Yes.
And he's also Deputy Emergency Management Director. So, Tim, just tell us what GIS is.
Well, basically, it's...
What's that stand for?
Geographic Information System. I mean, it's everything from as simple as a paper map to what it, what it means now as a digital map. Basically, anything on the map that's a point, we can tie data to, and we can, we can use it to generate other maps or lead us as far as what we need to do.
That, that's used for the nine-one-one system, because if you don't have the county mapped and houses mapped, it don't show up on the nine-one-one system. Is that right?
Correct. Well, that's part of what we're required to do. We have to map every house and every road.
That's required by law.
Yeah, that's part of the nine-one-one's function.
Okay. So you have to map the whole county?
Yes.
But it also is used for the road department mapping roads, solid waste system to map solid waste routes. But without mapping, you can't have nine-one-one. Is that right?
Correct. Or it wouldn't function.
And then when you say, talk about state compliance, GEOCOM, what is that?
Um, that is a standard across all states that all nine-one-one centers have to meet. Their geographical information system has to be in certain forms to go into that. That way, any, any nine-one-one dispatch in the state can pull up any other nine-one-one dispatch's mapping system. Because the way nine-one-one system, uh, nine-one-one answering points work is, say there was some kind of emergency, right now, Post Nine answers ours. Say there was an emergency in Coeur d'Alene and we had to evacuate, Post Nine dispatch. They can transfer nine-one-one trunks to another dispatch, whether it be Hazard or Pikeville or Prestonsburg, wherever. They can transfer the nine-one-one calls to there. And the mapping data is there. So when the, you dial nine-one-one and they transfer the call, say to Hazard.
So it's redundancy?
It's redundancy, yes. It's, and it's, it's a standard that they've set for all across the state.
Well, for instance, tornado hit Post and you couldn't dispatch from there, or there's a flood. We all know that's in the flood plain. Then...
Something similar to that happened a few years ago in West Liberty. Um, I spent a week down there helping West Liberty rebuild their nine-one-one dispatch because the tornado literally went across their dispatch center. So we had to rebuild it. So in the meantime, they had to transfer it off to another county's dispatch center.
And this GEOCOM didn't exist at that point. This has been about the last five years. This is a new thing we have to do.
And you all maintain all the radio towers?
Yes.
And that's important because the sheriff's office uses those?
Animal services, sheriff's office, fire departments, rescue squads.
The new radio system we bought for our fire and EMS uses those?
Yes.
So without radio tower sites, the radios don't work?
Correct. In fact, and that can get rather pricey. I've got one site that has went down. We're waiting on the stuff to come in for it right now. And that was, that was way over a hundred grand just for that site.
And that comes out of your budget?
That comes out of my budget.
And then the nine-one-one radios, you all, you all maintain them all, buy them all?
Yep. We, we provide radios for all the fire departments and we thank fiscal court because our radio system was aging and I couldn't get parts for it anymore. I was literally buying parts for it off eBay to just try to keep things going. And the new radio system, the handhelds are out to the departments, the mobiles are getting ready to be rolled out to be put in all the new trucks. And once all that's done, the fire departments will have a whole new radio system top.
And you all been, you're the ones that have been programming the radios?
Yes.
Shelby Valley's already got the new radios. They were, they the first department to get them?
Hmm, they was within the first few, two or three, something like that.
And they got there as the night before the flood?
Yeah.
Yeah. They, I remember, I, I know they had the new ones when we, back in July, they already had. And then you all had...
They were one of the first ones. I don't know if they was exactly the first one, but they were one of the first.
And the personnel and vehicles, like if you all have to go out and maintain sites, the vehicles?
Yes.
Your salary and the salary for, Tim, is it paid for by nine-one-one?
No, I'm county.
So you're on the county's payroll. So you're the, are you the only employee?
I'm the only full employee. Connie, our secretary, she, her, we pay half of her salary. And then we, like I said, we pay five salaries at Post Nine.
Okay. So the dispatchers?
Yes.
Part of... How many calls Pike County's nine-one-one system receiving a year?
Uh, a couple hundred thousand probably a year.
How many?
Probably a couple hundred thousand a year. I mean, EMS, yeah, goes through nine-one-one. That's EMS, law and... I mean, EMS, yeah, goes through nine one one, that's EMS, law enforcement, fire, rescue, it's just, I've been down there and within, during the, during a disaster, I've been standing in dispatch and seen over three hundred calls at one time on the board.
Say it again.
I've been, during a disaster, um, a weather event, whatever, I've been in dispatch before working on stuff, and I've actually seen over three hundred calls within thirty minutes be put on the board.
So uh, you've also attached the budget over here. What's the nine one one budget per year?
Right now, or what we're-
Right now.
Right now, we take in three hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars a year, and our budget is usually, has been set at four hundred thousand dollars a year for many years, and we've been under budget.
So-
Or, yeah.
For all the things you've talked about, paying the, paying dispatchers, paying the state police, the phone lines, the equipment, uh, the tower site maintenance, the radio maintenance, all the things that we've talked about, mapping, the budget's three hundred and twenty-six thousand a year?
Well, we take in three hundred and twenty-six thousand, we budgeted four hundred thousand, but we've never, we haven't met four hundred thousand in several years.
So where does, I'm, I'm trying to throw this out there so the public understands where this is, where, where the, what, where we are, where's your money for your budget come from?
Uh, landline, phone lines.
Landline, phone lines.
The analog landline, phone lines, the-
Voice over-
Like voice over IP, we do not collect any money off that. The, for example, U-verse, AT&amp;T U-verse is a voice over IP, and we do not collect nine one one fees for that.
It's about two fifty a month?
Two forty-one right now.
Two forty-one per month, per landline?
Per landline.
I know I got rid of my landline a couple of years ago, because we didn't use, the only thing we had was telemarketers calling.
Right.
Um, just curiosity, if everybody in the crowd, how many of y'all still have landlines? Hold your hand up. One, two, three, four, five, six, six or seven?
How many of those are, how many of those are uh like AT&amp;T U-verse or Magic Jack or something like that?
One of them's, one of them's voice over, anybody else got voice over? So you basically out of, I don't know, forty people here in the courtroom, thirty, forty people, you've got seven of them with landlines and, how many landlines are there in the county right now?
Uh, eleven thousand, three hundred and something.
And what was it ten years ago?
In two thousand, it was sixty-five thousand landlines.
Sixty-five thousand landlines down to eleven thousand?
Eleven thousand, eleven thousand, three hundred and something.
So let me just ask you this, if the state police is wanting to charge us four hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars, there's not enough money coming in?
No.
To even, to even pay that?
Even pay that bill, no.
Not counting employees, not counting towers, mapping, emergency?
Uh, handheld radios that we buy or the radio system that we've got, we have to put in a federally mandated radio system, they have to meet certain requirements.
Say, say it again?
The radio system that we're using ha- is federally mandated, we have to meet certain requirements for the federal mandate. Because of that, the cost of the radios is tremendous. Where the handhelds are about two thousand dollars apiece, the mobiles are about seventeen, eighteen hundred dollars apiece, the repeaters themselves are fourteen thousand dollars apiece.
So for each, so we got Chris Jones from Island Creek Fire Department where I live?
Yes.
Chris, welcome, I should have welcomed Chris earlier. Um, the handhelds, Chris, you all got the new handhelds, right?
Yes.
Are they working better up in like the head of left fork and places where they didn't used to work so well?
They do better, and they will do a lot better once we switch over to digital and those systems, when we get-
So, so just so the public knows, because the, the, the prior court spent about one point three million-
Yes.
For a new radio system for our fire departments and EMS, because as you said, they were buying radio parts off of eBay-
Yes.
Cause they didn't make them anymore.
Yes.
How much is each handheld?
About two thousand dollars.
So every time you see a volunteer fireman with one of these handheld radios, that's two grand?
That's two grand.
And you have to use those kind of radios because of federal law?
Yes, and I don't care the manufacturer, there's, there's several different manufacturers, but they're all priced right about the same.
So, at the beginning of this, there's not enough money coming in, because are the landlines just continuing to go down?
Yes, they're, we've watched a, a constant drop over the years.
Now, the prior court raised it about ninety-nine cents, I believe.
Yes, something, yeah, something like that.
Something around a dollar.
Yeah.
Because, and that, and if you hadn't done that, you'd have been even deeper.
Would have been even deeper, yes. Actually, if you hadn't raised it then, that we were trying to, um, trying to keep from putting anything else on the public, you know, that's never our intention, but that we raised it uh what we thought we could without putting any more problem with the public, but it just, it's not going to cut, especially now that the cost on everything else is going up.
So let me ask you this, this budget that you've attached here, you've got salary in fringe for the people we talked about, two hundred and fifty thousand, then software, ten thousand, pictometry, uh, ten thousand, two hundred and fifty, that's the pictures you take for the mapping?
Yeah, that, yes.
That's huge about basically all county government.
Equipment repair, because this stuff ob- obviously has to have maintenance, you've got fifteen thousand. You've got a radio tower contingency of two hundred and fifty thousand, if one of them's goes down by lightning or a storm or something like that. Well, insurance cover that?
Um, to a point, the tower that fell, insurance covered thirty-two thousand dollars of it.
And how much did it cost to put it back up?
Uh, hundred and sixty, hundred and seventy?
We'll be right at two hundred.
Yeah.
Where'd that money come from?
Um, right now, we're trying, we're going to figure that out, because um-
You don't have the money to pay that right now?
Yeah.
If, if you don't have towers, radios don't work?
Right.
You don't have radios, your emergency management system don't work?
Right, right now, right now, the area of Elkhorn is severely hurt because that tower at Elkhorn fell. I went up there and done what I could do to get it back online the best I could, uh, until we can get something replaced, but they're, they're severely limited on their radio communications up there right now.
Then you've got, so the two hundred and fifty thousand contingency would be just emergency funds if needed to-
Yes, if I had a tower fail, if I had lightning strike, because like I said, most tower sites have four to five repeaters per site, and the repeaters are fourteen thousand dollars, and in the time I've worked here, I actually did have lightning run directly in on a site one time and hooked everything in the site. Everything in there had to be replaced.
Yeah.
I've had to hack twice.
Light, lightning and electronics don't go well together.
No, and if you get a direct strike, I found out even the lightning arrestor equipment that I put in, it will jump the lightning arrestor equipment.
So let me ask you another question, you've got here, tower rental expenses, are there some of the towers that we have to pay releases on the property?
Some of the towers, we have to pay lease on the property that they're sitting on, then there's some towers that we're actually paying, uh, we don't own that tower, we're actually paying lease on the tow- the site, the tower.
And then you've got a, a yearly amount for vehicle replacement, seventy-five hundred. By the time you accumulate enough money to replace one, it'll be, you're saying that the vehicle be worn out, sent for it?
Yes, yeah.
And then vehicle maintenance, emergency mat and supplies, what is that?
Which one?
Emergency mat supplies.
Materials and things.
Oh, emergency materials and supplies, that's just for any little, that's, that's what's in our budget right now, that we work off of is emergency materials and supplies. Um, that covers parts and, or, I guess it was, I don't know how to classify them, like parts that you don't have a specific line item for.
And then you've got, uh, I'm gonna skip around here, I mean, you've got vehicle maintenance and uniforms, but one of the interesting ones is the drone program, and then that's five thousand, and then the drone replacement reserve is seven thousand, and I want to just talk about that drone issue. When, when that little child, two or three-year-old child disappeared down in McGoffin County and spent a couple nights out in the woods, Pike County's uh nine one one emergency management was down there with their drone?
Yes.
I think we have the infrared drone, is that right?
We have thermal, um, thermal drones, I have zoom cameras on drones, um, and we use them, and we have underwater drones, uh, I've been to lakes, uh, looking for bodies in lakes. The most recent one I looked for was in Camden Lake, we uh-
We've used-
The water was so cold at the bottom that divers with dry suits and insulated uh clo- clothes on under the dry suits couldn't stay down over two or three minutes. And the good thing about these drones and stuff are, is I can put a drone in a situation where you're not putting somebody's life in a-
Well, you, I think you used the drone with the train derailment?
Yes.
You've used the drone looking for, for plane crashes?
I've used them to look for plane crashes, I've used them on the train derailment, I've used them looking for missing, missing people that search, I've been to several counties, Martin County, Johnson County, Floyd County, McGoffin County, um, we've got one of the leading programs in the state.
And other counties look to us when they have an emergency?
Yes.
Used on slides, we've had, we've used it on slides, road departments had to deal with, and you know, I, I want to just mention-
Road department like it because of the imagery we can turn up for uh the different uh disasters that happen.
I think you all used it on the washout up at the uh Harlessus Creek, didn't you all use it up there?
Used it up there, I got photos for all that, for the, you was talking about the train derailment, the Federal Rail, Railroad Commission and the NTSB said I took two days off their investigation with uh what I could do for them with a drone up there on the-
But I, but I, I think the drones are important because they could save somebody's life, just like they saved that little child that they found down in, you know?
Yes, and we actually have a, a different drone now that's actually used for indoors, for if you have another active shooter situation like they had down in Allen, you can send it in, it's got infrared, it's made to fly indoors, it will ride itself, and uh it, it will possibly save lives there, because you can put, I would much rather put a piece of equipment in harm's way than a real person.
And then you've got the seventy thousand for the nine one one trunk lines, that's money that we have to pay for the lines going into post, is that correct?
Yes, that's the nine one one trunk lines.
So then you've got just money for radio equipment, radio system upgrades, so you've got a proposed budget here, is that one point five million, one million, five hundred and four thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars, is that every year, or would that be a, uh, some of that would not be recurring or uh?
Most of what's on that budget would be recurring. Um, the, the things like the tower contingency and stuff like that is so we don't have to try to figure out where to come up with money when I have a site go down for some reason, things like that.
But once, so I guess what I'm saying is, if you've got that contingency, you wouldn't have to have it every year. You wouldn't put the two hundred and fifty thousand aside for tower contingency every year? You would not, is that, am I correct? Well, you, once you set the two fifty aside as a contingency, you wouldn't need to do that every year?
Um-
You want it for a few years, because we're already two hundred thousand down this year. It's January.
How many towers does nine one one have?
I got seven towers with twenty-two different repeaters on seven towers.
And right now, you don't have the money for any of this?
Nope.
So, so what are our options? One, one is we can just shut nine one one down, that's an option, isn't it?
That, I mean, that, that is an actual option, there is no, there's no law that says we have to have nine one one in Pike County.
And, and I'm just gonna be right up front, it's like solid waste, we don't have to have that, and these people got mad because we raised the rates on that.
Right.
So if the public don't want nine one one, we could just do away with it.
Correct.
Have to live with the consequences.
Right.
I, I, I'm willing to pay it, because I've got three kids and a wife, and one of them has a wreck, I don't want to have to be scrambling around trying to find a number for the ambulance.
Well, here's another part of that, is not only does, like I said with the communication part, it not only does, if you've done away with nine one one, you've also done away with all the communications, so if you're trying to get a fire department to come out, most of the fire departments in the county are volunteer, so you would have to call the phone line for the fire station and hope somebody's there, and it's a volunteer during the day, people's-
Or call their cell phones or whatever.
Or call their cellphone or something and try to get ahold of people. Cause if we didn't have this, we'd have to shut down that.
So, now, there's a nine one one advisory board?
Yes.
Dutch Hickman's my proxy on there.
Yes.
You get the state police post commander?
Yes.
You've got, who else on that, tell the public who's on there?
You got the, the mayor or designated from Coeur d'Alene, Elkhorn, the judge's office, KSP post nine, the sheriff's office, um-
Fire departments.
Fire departments. And there, there's six members on the board, so.
Chris, are you the designated from fire departments?
Yes.
So, 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 so tell me something, you all have looked at options, right?
Yes, we went to several counties, um, me and Mr. Tim Fields have went to several counties, and even the counties that we haven't driven to, I've called more counties and talked with their nine one one coordinators, and most of the counties are doing the same thing across the state. They, uh, one county did a try to uh combat this with attaching it to a power bill, and it has failed miserably. Um, it went to court and the county lost, the county tried to force the issue and it went to court and it lost.
So as I understand it, it was maybe Marshall County or somebody tried to force the power company?
Yes.
To put the nine one one fee on the power bill?
Yes.
And the Supreme Court, the court appeal said, you can't make them do that?
Nope, said if they take it willingly, that's, that's fine, but if they don't take it willingly, we're not gonna force the issue.
Does the law allow the nine one one board or county to assess a fee on cell phones?
Uh, the cell phones is legisla- is um-
Is regulated?
Regulated by legislation.
Legislature, the legislature sets that?
Legislature sets that, and we get a small percentage of it.
How much do you get a year from that?
Uh, about a hundred thousand, a hundred and fifty, maybe.
Hundred and fifty thousand, and we can't raise it on the cell phones in the county?
No, that is all done through legislation.
Can't put it on things like Magic Jack or voice over IP?
No, no, not this time, not until some legislation is changed.
So the hole keeps getting deeper every time somebody drops a phone line?
Yes.
So what's your all's proposal, as, as I understand it, the board, Chris, has voted to, for a specific approach to fix this?
Yes, we went to, uh, like I said, we went to several counties to talk to them, and most counties to combat this issue have put a flat rate fee, have moved basically the surcharge from phone lines to uh property tax bills, it's a flat rate, it's not actually a tax, it's just a flat rate on a bill.
So my, my question is, is it on vehicles or is it just on?
No, just property, property only.
Real property?
Just real property.
Did they take off the phone surcharge or they leave it on?
Some have and some haven't, uh, what we proposed was, if we take it off the phones like right now, we would be dead with zero money until the tax time at the end of the year. So our proposal was to leave it on the phone bills until the end of the year, hope, our, our idea was to leave it on the phones until hopefully no more than January of next year, and that way the property tax will be taken over. But as a, as a emergency contingency, we put in there as no more than two years, because we talked to Mr. Hickman about the way uh all the occupational tax. It took it about a year, little over a year to finally get picked up and take off real good. So we were gonna do a year on the phone lines, leave it on the phone lines for the rest of this year, and do the property tax, and by January one, take it off unless the property tax just didn't pay off, then leave it on no more than one more year.
So one to two years, keep the phone, phone lines surcharge?
Because they're going down, they're going down anyway, so.
After that, eliminate it?
Yeah.
And then go to a fill them?
Yeah, go to fix-
Any idea how much money that would bring in?
Um, about one, with what their collection rate is, about one point four.
Let these guys ask some questions, whatever they want.
Got a question?
How much you looking monthly?
How much you looking monthly?
Uh?
How much does it equal down to monthly?
Five dollars a month. What it comes down to?
About, so five dollars a month. And this is not, it's not a raise in property tax, right, this is for nine-one-one.
It's just a flat rate, it doesn't, it doesn't, it's not depending on your property, whatever your property tax value is, it's a flat rate fee, whether your property tax is fifty bucks a year, or whether it's, you know, two thousand dollars a year, it's just a flat rate fee.
It's a fee per unit.
Yeah.
Okay, that's, that's what I want the public to understand, that we're not raising property tax, I mean, first and foremost, you know.
We're not trying to raise property tax, we're just moving this from, because right now you've got eleven thousand people in the county that are funding the entire county.
Yeah, and there's probably not another person in this building knows how important nine-one-one is, no more than I do.
Right.
I've spent ninety percent of my life in it, my older age, but, okay, so, five dollars a month. That's the only thing I really, I wanted, and I wanted to stress that, it is not a raise on property tax.
It's not a raise in property tax, we're just moving the fee from landlines to property tax. And this will actually make it a little more fair, because like I said, eleven thousand people right now that have got landlines in the county are footing the bill for the entire county. So, you've got a lot of people that are not even paying into it, so.
Well, you know, and I agree, I have to agree with the judge on that, I've got three small, well, three children and a wife that runs this road all the time, and I want somebody to be able to show up if you need to call them too, I understand that part of it.
Oh yes, I'm, I've got a wife and a child, and I'm, I'm thankful that there is a number, and my wife had a wreck here not too long, well, it's been two years ago, and, uh, you know, that call went out. And it was a nine-one-one call that went out.
And to make it a little more clear, this is not gonna start next year, right? You, did I hear that, when would it actually start being added to the property tax, what year?
Twenty twenty-three property tax.
Twenty twenty-three property tax? Okay.
So, the fiscal court has to approve that?
Yes, the fiscal, all the fiscal court has to do is prove us actually being able to attach it to the property tax bill.
What happens if we don't do anything?
If you don't do anything, I would say within six months, nine-one-one will be out of money, we won't be able to pay post, and they will, they have already said if we don't pay the bill, they will turn it off.
How much would it cost us to put our own nine-one-one dispatch center in?
Um, about two hundred and fifty, three hundred thousand dollars in equipment and building, and then, well, that's not including building, about two hundred and fifty, three hundred thousand dollars in equipment, plus a building to put it in, or lease a building to put it in. And if we do fifteen dispatchers, um, at about the same salary that, uh, and you will have to be a competitive salary with like post nine, or other dispatchers.
So we, we would need fifteen dispatchers?
About fourteen to fifteen dispatchers.
And then?
About six hundred, we, we figured it out, me and you figured it out, with about six hundred thousand with fringe benefits and everything, be about six hundred thousand dollars. And that's not including any kind of overtime, that will be, just, that's all straight time.
About a half a million to go in, about six hundred thousand a year.
Half a million for the, for the equipment, plus a building?
Plus a building, yeah.
Plus about six hundred thousand a year for salaries?
Yes.
Plus that's gonna go up as fringe benefits and pension costs and that kind of stuff goes up?
Yes.
What's the best option, is it to put our own in, or is it to stay with post?
Right now, our best option is to stay where we're at, that is the most cost-effective option. If post nine can keep, if KSP continues to raise it over the years, um, and the contract says they can't raise it for two years. So we're, we're guaranteed that price for the next two years. But now, at the end of that contract, they can, uh, revise their cost if they so choose. This time, I'd say stay where we're at.
When, when's the last time state police raised it?
Um, yeah. Back in early, early two thousands.
So it's been a long time?
It's been a long time.
So if you don't do something, you can't even pay the state police to dispatch?
No, the, their bill alone is more than we take in.
He's gonna be, a lot of people ain't happy about that, but, you know, the pu- public needs to, I think what we ought to do is, you know, let the newspaper write them an article about it, and let the public decide if they want nine-one-one. There's a lot of people that didn't want solid waste, and got mad because the rates went up.
Yeah.
Maybe, maybe public needs to understand, you know, and they can, public can decide if they want nine-one-one, or they can go back to the way it was in nineteen seventy-four, when if your house caught on fire, you had to hunt a number up for the local fire department.
Correct. They hunt a number up, because there'll be no, there'll be no communications for the fire, the ambulance coming to you.
What's the court think, or wrong with y'all game?
Well, it sounds like that, uh, we don't need to do without that, but, uh, I didn't want to get in his predicament, uh, early, because, you know, we just took office. And I sort of campaigned and said, I won't raise no taxes on nobody. And I know what kind of problem it is, and, uh, sort of got me fumbled, but I think we needed to make a lot of people mad.
I mean, one, one of the things is, uh, when did you, you just got the final number from the state police, is that recently?
Uh, about two weeks ago, yeah. Right, right after the last court meeting before the first year, is when I finally got the last number on this.
And have they, have they revised their contract yet?
Uh, it's sent to them, I'm waiting on their legal department to get back, it's, uh-
So we, we don't have the-
County approved it for our legal, and I sent it to them.
But we don't have the revised, we don't even have the contract yet.
No, but we do have first bill already.
So they've already sent a bill?
They've already sent a bill.
That's, that's nice.
First quarter, hundred and fifteen thousand dollars for the first quarter.
I thought they, I thought they told us that they would wait till twenty twenty-four.
They told us that, um, if we, they would send us the bill, that we could pay the old amount, but by June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, anything that we haven't paid on the new amount, we have to back up and make sure it's paid.
So, I just want to make sure that the public understands this, that the fiscal court don't do anything. In a few months, there won't be no nine-one-one.
Correct, correct.
And there won't be no nine-one-one office.
Correct.
And there won't be no fire department radios, or?
No communication for any emergency services?
Sheriff won't have, uh, support.
Sheriff won't have the support, um, and actually he will probably lose some of his communications because of tower leases, and, well, we pay all the utilities for the towers too, so.
All the electricity.
Yeah, all the electricity for the towers and everything, so, actually he'll probably lose all these communications, because if there's no nine-one-one to pay the bills.
And his new radio system will never get installed.
Yeah.
Won't have anybody to put his radio system in service.
Well, won't have nobody putting it in service, and if when they, when they do put it on one of the towers, or it won't work, because there won't be no power.
When will we have the contract back from state police?
I'm hoping anytime. I got an email from Mr. Jimmy Kitchens yesterday that said, or was it yesterday, April?
Yeah, yesterday.
That said he, uh, he sent some questions, and I answered his questions, and he sent it back and said he would send it up to legal and get back with me as soon as they get it back to him.
Well, we got a court meeting on the seventeenth. I think we all need some time to digest this and let the public decide what they want. So you're talking about, with the proposal to nine-one-one board, let's me be clear, the public understands this, this ain't the fiscal court's proposal.
Not the fiscal court, the nine-one-one, the nine-one-one, the only, the only thing here that the fiscal court has to approve is whether or not we can place this on the tax bills, as a fee on the tax bill.
Who sets the rate?
Nine-one-one board sets the rate.
The fiscal court don't set the rate, we just have to approve it going on the tax bill?
Yes.
Let me ask you a question, what about people that, uh, rent apartments and stuff, don't have property tax?
Um, the way it's wrote up, uh, it will go, each, each apartment will have the bill. It will be, because even though they don't have a property tax bill for the apartments, the landowner will have a property tax, so each apartment will have the fee. And, uh, then the landowner, it's up to them whether they want to pay, whether they want to take care of it, or they want to pass it off to the people that's renting on the rent.
Somebody that has a hundred apartments.
They'll get a hundred fees.
Whatever we raise, whatever the rate is, they have to pay a hundred times, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
And, and in other counties, what we've run into is they just pass that off onto the rent to the people that's renting out of the apartments.
Well, they, they basically raise it five, raise the rent five dollars a month, because?
Well, I was, I was just wondering, because, you know, that way, just property owners wouldn't be paying it.
Right, right.
And it's, it's per, it's per unit, it's not just for property.
Right, it's true.
If you've got a vacant lot, you're not, it's not gonna go on your tax bill.
Right.
It's per habitable residential or commercial unit.
That's why, so if you've got, if you've got a farm, I mean, a bottom that you're-
Right.
You got a tax bill on, you pay, you wouldn't have a nine-one-one bill.
No, you will not have a fee, unless you have a, a unit that-
A, a, a living unit, or a-
Habitable structure.
Habitable structure, or a business.
Commercial.
Commercial business, you know, um, if it's a barn, that's not considered a habitable structure.
Right.
That doesn't, that doesn't count. If you've got just a, a plain bottom, you know, like Lower Johns Creek's got a lot of just big bottoms down through there and stuff, those won't have it. Just habitable structures, which is technically what would have it in, back in the nineties, uh, when nine-one-one was put in and everybody had analog phone lines, that's what it was, habitable structures and businesses.
Yeah, so the fiscal court don't set the rate?
Correct.
The nine-one-one board sets the rate?
Correct.
If that's the case, why did the fiscal court have to vote to raise it on the phone bills?
I don't know why the fiscal court did, because technically they didn't have to, unless they just brought it to the fiscal court, so the fiscal court would, uh, prove it. The nine-one-one board has always set the rates, all the way back, the, not, now, the fiscal court set the original rate when the nine-one-one was put in, but that's also part of the ordinance.
We had sixty thousand landlines, it wouldn't be a problem.
No, if we had sixty thousand landlines right now, this would, we would not be here, and this would not be an issue.
Y'all want to wait till seventeenth, and y'all can talk to some of your constituents, and what you want to do about it?
I think it'd be a good idea.
Yeah, and, uh, you know, we give the people time to comment and talk to us, but they can also call CJ in his office and explain, you know, talk it over CJ too, he can help take some of this. Because, I mean, we're, we're new at this, you know, this is our second meeting, throw it at us, you can explain it to them what the nine-one-one board done if they need you to, I mean, better than, because I wasn't at the nine-one-one meet, board meeting, you know, and that way, you know, that people might understand a little better that it's not us doing it, we just got to give the approval for how it's collected, more or less.
Right, based on all y'all have to do is give the approval for how it's collected.
I had the, I had the fun, the, the pleasure of having to deal with a solid waste system that was in about the same shape.
Not fun.
Well, nobody wants to pay more, and I can tell you, nobody wants to vote and make people pay more.
I, I say right now, I don't want to pay more and stuff.
But I can tell you this much, the public's gonna have a week or two to decide what they want to do.
I don't want to pay more on stuff either, but I also really like that my family can call and get help.
Yeah, my dad had a massive heart attack and called nine-one-one, Sid Lester was there with an ambulance in two or three minutes, and saved my dad's life, got him to the hospital. Just, that's just what, I guess it's what people are willing to pay for.
Well, too, you know, you was talking about attaching it to the property tax, if they understand that everybody's gonna have to pay it, one way or the other.
Correct, yes, uh, that, like I said, the other counties and other counties, that's, they said, a few counties, the fiscal courts are subsidizing them, but not many. Most of them have went this way, because this way we'll also let nine-one-one stand on its own, we won't be depending on the fiscal court for-
There's no way the fiscal court could come up with a million dollars a year to put into nine-one-one.
And I understand that, but I'm, I mean, I would just give them examples, but, yeah, I understand that.
The fiscal court could, but people don't need to expect too much roadwork to get done.
Or anything else, probably.
Anything else to get done.
Correct, and nine-one-one needs to be able to stand on its own, it doesn't need to depend on the fiscal court to, uh, fund it, it needs to be able to stand on its own.
Well, it's pretty important, especially if you've got young kids.
Uh, yeah, even the elderly.
Yeah, but I mean, you know what I'm saying?
Yes. Yeah, I don't, I don't want to make the elderly think we're excluding them out, just, children are very important, but so are the elderly, you know?
Somebody falls, they get, you know, if they can just get to dial nine-one-one, they'll get some help, even if they can't speak.
Right. Absolutely, that, that's what nine-one's all about, is public safety.
I, I had an eighteen-month-old that figured out to dial nine-one-one on one of those cartoons, and we had a couple of episodes where the police showed up and said, is there a problem here? And I realized real quick, my little boy, who's now sixteen, was the one that was responsible.
We've, we've had that happen, you wouldn't believe the amount of times that that's happened, um, and they will attempt to call you back, and if you don't answer, uh, then they dispatch super law enforcement to, uh, come and see if, make sure that there's not a problem, because it can happen, somebody can call nine-one-one, say in a domestic, uh, domestic abuse situation, somebody can call nine-one-one, and then the abuser walks in, they'll hang the phone up.
I, I got a funny story, I'll tell it.
Okay.
So, you know, I got the commercial on, over at the movie theater, my phone rings. Wade Jones? It was a little kid, was at the theater, saw my number, and picked it up and dialed it, so, uh, you know, if they see nine-one-one on the TV show, they're gonna try to dial it, uh.
But you know, you have a lot of kids play sports, I mean, you look at what happened over the weekend with NFL.
True, I mean, well, honestly, response is slow enough just because we're humans. If you add in that you have to individually call each fireman and each ambulance, it's impossible.
I had a friend of mine's son was airlifted, uh, from the Phelps, from Phelps at a football game this year because of, they were worried about a spinal cord injury.
Yeah.
But, like I said, we'll give the people, public, some time to talk about it, and if they-
Speaking of that, um, the helicopters, when they come in to do pickups like that?
Yeah.
They're talking to the firemen on the ground, on the radio system?
Yeah.
To be able to, uh, make sure they got a safe place to land. Because fire departments respond to, uh, secure the scene to make, give them room for helicopter to land, so.
Have to make sure the par, no, no paralines or obstructions.
Or people, or, you know, loose debris on the ground that can be bloat around, and-
Or go up into the rotors.
Go up in the rotors, uh, so, I mean, it's, even helicopters use to talk to the fire departments. Uh, Mr. Atkins can attest to that, how many times we landed helicopters and we talked to them on the ground, tell them it, they're clear or not, and stuff.
I did two weeks ago, Mathmore, on Harshes Creek Bank.
That was where a guy got burnt, wasn't it?
Huh?
That was where a guy got burnt?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, actually, you know, I was familiar with that, and I talked to helicopter, whenever he circled, he said, I see lines, and I marked them. Talked to him, he come sit down, close to me, to the judge, right in front of me up there. It hits, the radio system's nice, it works good.
And helicopters will not land if they don't have a ground contact?
No, no, they have to talk to them.
Down without a ground contact?
They will not land without ground contact.
One person top of the-
They'll sit and scream for a half an hour, before they'll sit down until somebody talks to them.
I didn't know that.
They have to have one person that knows what's going on, what's around.
I had a relative that was airlifted to UK a couple of years ago for a brain bleed. But like I said, you know, I didn't want this to have to, you know, this administration to have to deal with this. These guys don't want to have to deal with it, but it's what we get paid for, and it's important, and let the public have some time to talk to Commissioner Scott, Commissioner Blabber, and Commissioner Atkins, myself, and, you know, people can decide if they, they want a nine-one-one system or not.
Appreciate it.
And what did you say, the, it'd be a five dollar rate?
Yeah, five dollars a month, sixteen cents a day is what it works out to, roughly.
Five dollar on residential, slightly different rates on commercial.
Five dollars a month?
Yeah.
What, what's the commercial rate?
Uh. Uh, they said a standard commercial at eighty-four a year, um, medium to large is a hundred and fifty-six a year, and, uh-
Seven and thirteen.
Huh?
Seven and thirteen a month.
Yeah, seven and thirteen a month.
How much?
Seven dollars a month for small businesses and, uh, large businesses, medium to large is thirteen dollars a month.
How do you, how do you classify small versus medium and large?
Um, we said, uh, small, standard commercial, which will be your small, is-
Ones that put some big commercials on.
Huh?
I told him he's gonna pay thirteen where he puts some big commercials on.
I probably ended up with it.
Um, each occupied individual commercial unit, uh, medium to large commercial, i.e. a small garage, beauty shop, uh, non-chain restaurant, seating less than twenty people, stuff for a small, uh, medium to large commercials are, um, like including your large grocery stores, your hard, large hardware chain stores, large restaurants, buildings over two stories, commercial buildings that exceed five thousand square feet. And we pulled that from a lot of, from what other counties had done.
Yeah, we probably researched twenty counties.
Will, got any other questions?
No, I think it's important, I mean, because, like I say, you've got a lot of kids playing sports, that matter of minutes could help.
You know, after that, uh, after that, uh, cardiac arrest event up there at, uh, the Bills Bengals game, you know, I was surprised, but that's happened a lot, even like Little League baseball, where kids been hitting the chest with a line drive.
Yes, a hard enough, a hard enough impact to your sternum will stop your heart.
Well, it's apparently, uh, fortunately, uh, you know, Damar Hamlin's doing better, apparently he's neurologically intact, but, you know, uh, one of the things I want to talk to the court about here before too long, I'm gonna go ahead and mention it, is, you know, buying some, they're fairly inexpensive, but, you know, we need some, uh, uh, automatic external defibrillators, AEDs, because that's probably what saved Hamlin's life.
Those, those are, those are a miracle, and-
Y'all don't already have them in the-
We don't have them, they've never had them, and what I'd like to do is get one to put in, um, in all of air, uh, solid, not, uh, probably can't put them in every truck, but at least in the, uh, road department, uh, road foreman and, uh, road supervisor, solid waste supervisors and foreman's trucks, uh, like Paul's crew when they're out working, you know, we need to look, see what the cost will be, but I really do think we need them, we need to have a couple here in this building, we need to have a couple in the judicial center, we need to have a couple in, uh, all the county buildings need to have them.
They're, they're very cost-effective, I mean, like the ones you see hanging in Walmart in these places, they're, they're very reasonable. I mean, not, nothing like they used to be once upon a time.
Three, four, five thousand dollars.
They're, no, they're a lot cheaper now, and they're- Very simple to operate, they're, they will not shock somebody that doesn't- Very simple to operate, they're, they will not shock somebody that doesn't need shocked. It takes the human error factor out of that of, like you see on TV with the doctor and they put the paddles on you and hit them. No, these don't do it, you just put the stickers on it, it tells you where to stick them and you hit the button and there's one button on it, you hit it, it analyzes and if it needs shock.
I'm, I'm gonna do it for my house and my office because, uh.
I carry one in my truck.
Yeah, I mean, they could, they could save somebody's life, you know, my dad's had heart problems, uh, you know, my wife has even talked about, you know, if you had a, a kid that had an event in the pool, I mean, they've saved a lot of lives and we need, Reggie's working on that, we're gonna get a, a list. We need the commissioners to give us a list of what they think, where they, where they're needed. I mean, we can't buy one for every vehicle in every place, but there needs to be a way to make those available. Need what? Seniors, that's what I'm saying.
Senior citizens, senior citizens are definitely.
Citizen centers definitely need them, because you know, if you have a senior citizen, you know, a lot of senior citizens have AFib or something like that and if they get, you know, you know, go into a dangerous rhythm, um, you know, something like Vfib or VTAC or something like that, you know?
And when it comes to heart problems like that, people don't realize that it's seconds count, not, not minutes or hours, it's seconds.
Yeah.
If your heart messes up, even if they can restart your heart, because, a- and I can speak to this from a very personal standpoint, even if they can restart your heart, if it, if you're down too long, you have brain damage and there's no bringing you back.
No, I mean, it's.
That, that.
It's the perfusion.
That happened very close to me.
C- CPR and, uh, AEDs save lives.
Yes.
So, and we've done a lot to train, a lot of our employees have been trained on CPR, we've still got some that need to be. Um, but anyway, we'll, we'll address this some more, hopefully Reggie can get us some information on the AEDs. Um, I don't know if Greg can check and see if anybody's got them on state, uh, con, uh, state contract where we can get them. And, um, then we'll take it from there, y'all, y'all think that'd be a good idea?
Yeah.
I would like to thank the court for their time and I appreciate them listening.
We appreciate the good news, CJ.
Yeah, thank you for all you do too, CJ.
Uh, you're very welcome.
All you are.
I mean, it's gonna be, I'm running late, tell them, we're in there telling my bit, nervous man. Just tell them, just tell them we're about done, all right, um. All right, we have, let's take a break, uh, Greg's got a couple of things. Let's go ahead and do this, let's go ahead and go to executive session, we just have a couple of things to do and then we'll come back and finish the rest of the business. Colonel Downey, would you please instruct the court on the relevant provisions of Kentucky open meeting laws that pertains to entry into executive session by fiscal court?
Yes, Judge, under Kentucky revised statute sixty-one point eight one zero, the court is allowed to go into executive session under paragraph C to discuss proposed opinion litigation and under paragraph F to discuss specific personnel issues.
All right, is there a, uh, motion to enter into executive session?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Atkins, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner, was that Commissioner, uh, Blackburn?
Yeah.
Second by Commissioner Blackburn, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Blackburn?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes, we'll stand in recess for executive session, return to call the chair. Adhere from executive session.
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Blackburn, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Atkins, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Blackburn?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes. Only personnel action we have is a gentleman who was omitted, um, from the rehire because he's off, uh, work right now. It'd be my motion to rehire Michael Thacker as a CDL truck driver, solid waste lot one at a four H rate of pay with longevity, effective one, two, twenty-three, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Atkins, uh, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Blackburn?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes. All right, let's go back to Trail Advisory Board, have you got that list for me? It's his expire. Nominate for the Trail Advisory Board, get me some names, cause I mean, we've got some vacancies. Uh, we have a resignation from Eric McPeak, we also have where Cliff Ag, uh, Cliff Smallwood became an employee. I'm gonna make a motion to, on the Trail Advisory Board, to, um, put Cliff Smallwood and Jerry Atkins in two of those open positions. Uh, since they're working on it every day, I think they do need to have a, a role in the advisory board process. Uh, so I would nominate, um, and move to add, uh, Jerry Atkins and Cliff Smallwood to the Trail Advisory Board along with Commissioner, uh, Ronald Scott, Commissioner Orville Blackburn. Would there be a second to adding, uh, Jerry and Cliff on the board?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Atkins, uh, any other question or discussion, seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Blackburn?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes, if anybody else has, like I said, anybody wants to serve on it, that's watching, call, we'd be happy to, we got some vacancies. Uh, but if y'all have anybody you want to put on it that's interested in it, let me know and I'll, I'll nominate them for you.
Okay.
All right, so let's move on to awarding of bids, Mr. Fannin. Before we do that, we've got a revised nepotism policy, I need, uh, Roy to get with, uh, Justin and get it ready to do a first reading at the next court meeting on the seventeenth, I want that on the agenda. Um, all right, please proceed, Mr. Fannin.
Uh, Judge, I did make a note on your comment about the condition of your chair, we'll see if we can find you something else to sit on, maybe a new chair.
Somebody was making a comment.
Or a veil or straw or something.
It's getting a little w- wobbly up here.
I understand, we'll see if we can get that taken care of.
But I, I can make it, I'm okay, it was just somebody else thought I was, was worried about me, I think, so.
Okay.
All right, let's, let's do this.
Uh, we do have in the capital budget this year, a new backhoe. At the end of our last fiscal year in June, we ordered a backhoe, uh, we just received that backhoe about four to six weeks ago. It is a Caterpillar four twenty XC backhoe, very nice backhoe. Um, we have another one that we're in need of, that we have in the capital budget for this year. If we order one now, um, it's gonna be about June before we receive it. Um, the list pri.
When, before you receive it?
June.
Okay.
The list price on this piece of equipment is two hundred and six thousand, two hundred and sixty-two dollars. It is on a Kentucky master agreement with a twenty-five percent discount. We also negotiated in a multi-machine discount, we bought several pieces of equipment, um, in the last few years. Uh, that discount would be ninety-eight hundred and sixty-seven dollars. Went back and talked again with the salesperson and the factory rep and we got an additional five thousand dollars off. Uh, this would also include a, uh, uh, four-year, four-thousand-hour premium extended warranty. It would also, um, include a four-year, four-thousand-hour maintenance agreement, which means they would come and do all the oil changes, all the services as required by this piece of equipment. Uh, with these additional discounts and this additional warranty and service agreement, uh, our cost would be one hundred and sixty-three thousand, two hundred and forty-two dollars and twenty-eight cents. Be right, my recommendation that we buy this, um, Caterpillar backhoe, four twenty XC from Boyd Equipment at a cost of one hundred and sixty-three thousand, two hundred and forty-two dollars and twenty-eight cents.
And just so the public knows, we had one at the June, in the July flood, we had one backhoe on, uh, the Robinson Creek lot that was a total loss. We've replaced a lot of equipment, but the one thing we've not replaced is the backhoes. Fabian, you want to talk about the backhoes and what condition they're in real quick, come up here real quick.
We actually only have one out of, uh, the six backhoes that we have that's in decent shape. The rest of them do need replaced, uh, this backhoe would replace the one that was flooded, but then we do have a need for another one immediately, cause I still have two rentals out right now, so, you know, there's gonna be another backhoe that's gonna, gonna need to be bought pretty fast. The other ones are, you know, we keep patching them together and getting them out there, but they're not gonna last very long.
We've got two written, we're renting them right now, this is in the budget. Um, one of the things I tried to do when we came in was, there was no capital plan, you know, there was, in the past, they'd buy six garbage trucks, well, you know, that means six is gonna wear out about the same time. I always thought it was better if you could plan your purchases staggered, you're not having to be out so much money at one time.
But now also, this machine here is, is like the one that we had just, uh, purchased and that, that is a, a very, very good machine.
And we do need it for the road department.
Oh, yeah, like, yeah, that replaces the one that's flooded and, like I said, we've got a rental out there right now feeling that, that we're paying every month.
How much are we paying on the rental?
I think it's twenty-five a month.
We five hundred a month. Is there a motion to approve this budgeted purchase for the Caterpillar, um, four twenty XC backhoe, uh, with warranty on the state government price of a hundred and sixty-three thousand, two hundred and forty-two dollars and twenty-eight cents?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Atkins, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Scott. Any question or discussion on this issue, seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Blackburn?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes, anything else, sir?
Thank you, Judge, it's all I have.
Fabian, just stay right there, you're next contestant on the Price is Right.
Okay, so really about the, uh, only update that I have would be on that Gin Fork Bridge. I mean, all my other crew, crews, they're just doing their, you know, maintenance, regular maintenance stuff, but, uh, the Gin Fork Bridge should be done by Wednesday, they're, uh, pouring the curbs today, the deck's already been poured on the bridge. They're forming up for the curbs, they'll pour them Monday, so time, you know, we should have all that cleaned up and out of there around Wednesday, Wednesday of next week.
Okay, so I talked on the Billy Ball Bridge, I talked to Michael DeBourbon that represents the, the less, or less C of that piece of property and he is working on an agreement, how lo, he, the, one of the questions is how long would we need that?
I wouldn't go less than two months, because anything could happen with the weather or, you know, this time of year. Um, you know, normally if we get in there and we can do the job, we can be in and out in a month, but you can't say that because you don't know how many days you're gonna be off for weather.
I told him I thought six weeks, but if you think we need.
We better bump it up to two months just to be safe.
Okay, I will reach back out to him, he's working on that agreement.
Yeah.
Judge, we've actually sent an agreement, cause if you remember, you talked to me about that.
I understand that, but he was not happy with that agreement.
Well, he did not get back to us yet.
I called him.
Okay.
And he's working on a revised proposal.
Cause it, it had two months in there, if he's saying it didn't, it does.
No, that's, there were some other issues.
Okay.
Um, but I explained very clearly that if this gentleman persisted in not giving us access, that I would make a motion to condemn the property and we'll just let you sue him on a condemnation action. Uh, this bridge has got to be replaced before it collapses.
It does, you know, and the, and the people, and it, it has gotten worse and actually that, if we could get this settled, that will be the next bridge that I will go to as soon as we leave Gin Fork. It would be to go there.
So I will follow back up with Mr. DeBourbon, uh, either today or Monday.
Yeah.
And then we'll take it from there.
Okay, but I, I don't have anything else, so that's, that's about all I have on mine.
All right, so the next item is the, uh, Pike County Road Department completed work orders and scheduled work orders. Do y'all have anything you need to add to this, or anything?
Uh, there was a lady contacting me from up Buckfield, but I'll get up to you, Fabian, afterward.
Is that the drain? Is that about the drain, yeah, I have spoke with her a few times and, and that drain will have to be changed out. It's just with the flooding and everything else, it's kind of wasn't as, well, anyway, but, you know, it, it's on there to be changed out.
That drain, that drain can't be cleaned, it's filled up with concrete.
It was, it was filled up with cement, we took, we went up there and tried to bust it out and, uh, we just can't get it open.
Okay, I wanted to check on that and.
Yep.
I, I talked to her too and we just explained to her until we get, you know, we're behind because of the flood damage, but she wanted that drain cleaned out, but it's, somebody filled it full of concrete and it's gonna have to have new drain put in it.
Okay.
But, uh, I think there is a work order in on that, Fabian.
There is.
All right, is there a motion to approve the completed and scheduled work orders?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Atkins, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Scott, any questions or discussions, seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Blackburn?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes, next item is treasurer's business, Mr. Stacy, you have the floor, sir.
Authorize the following interfund transfers for December twenty twenty-two, uh, to transfer four hundred nineteen thousand, eight hundred and ten dollars from the road fund to the maintenance garage fund and to transfer four hundred nineteen thousand, eight hundred and ten dollars from the solid waste fund to the maintenance garage fund.
Is there a motion to authorize the transfers of four hundred nineteen thousand, eight hundred and ten dollars from the road fund to the maintenance garage and the solid waste fund to the maintenance garage?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Scott, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Blackburn, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes. Yes. Yes.
Yes.
And because solid waste is a separate bank account, I need to authorize a check from the solid waste bank account to the consolidated bank account to cover that transfer in the amount of four hundred nineteen thousand, eight hundred and ten dollars.
Is there a motion to authorize?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Atkins, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Blackburn, any question or discussion, seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes. Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Authorize a check to the Kentucky State Treasurer Division of Environmental Protection in the amount of one thousand dollars for a water quality permit, uh, for the stream bank on the Pond Creek Hazard Mitigation Grant.
Is there a motion to authorize a check to the Kentucky State Treasurer, Kentucky Division of Environmental Protection in the amount of one thousand dollars for the water quality permit for the Pond Creek Hazard Mitigation Grant?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Blackburn, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Scott, any question or discussion, seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes. Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Authorize checks for lodging, registration and expenses for any employee who needs to attend the forty-first annual KCJE winter conference, February first and second, at the Griffin Gate Marriott in Lexington.
Is there a motion to authorize?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Blackburn, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Atkins, any question or discussion, seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Blackburn?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes.
Last thing I have would be to acknowledge receipt of the treasurer's monthly financial statement ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two.
Is there a motion to acknowledge receipt of the treasurer's monthly financial statement ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Atkins, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Blackburn, any other question or discussion, seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes. Yes. Yes.
Yes. Any other business, Mr. Stacy?
That's all I had, Judge.
All right, thank you, all right. Next item is, uh, any of their department supervisors, anything from purchasing, animal shelter, anything from the commissioner's office, anything from safety, anything from finance, solid waste, grants, flood plain, trails, road department, personnel, anything from assistant county attorney's position? I've already signed it, yeah, it's already signed.
It's been filed, downstairs, recorded.
All right, Deputy, uh, Judge Hickman, anything? All right, um, anything from the treasurer? Anything from the clerk's office, Wesley said that?
You need a chair.
I don't, I'm good, I'll, I'll be all right. Um, all right, uh, commissioners' comments, uh, Commissioner Scott, we'll start with you, sir.
I don't have nothing, Judge.
All righty, Commissioner Blackburn, anything?
Nothing.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yeah, I do.
Yeah, I do, I just want to thank all the employees that's out here working, our solid waste guys that hit it pretty rough this week, kind of being double garbage on them, thank them for what they do, Judge, I'll get you a five gallon bucket to sit on before next meeting.
I appreciate that, Commissioner, I just knew you'd have something to say today. All right, I don't have anything, I can survive with the chair. At this time, I would ask, if there's any other business to come before the court, if not, I'd like to ask Nee Jackson to come up and say the benediction, and we will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Can I ask something?
You may, you don't have to ask, yes, sir.
Is there any way we could hold some kind of like town meeting and let the people talk about this 911?
You can absolutely have one if you want to, I may not be there, but you could have one.
They know, you know, that way, they know what, let them talk to the people.
I think that we could schedule something like that. Question is...
A lot of people don't watch, you know, this.
I don't know where you would want to do it at.
They could do it at a high school or something.
If you want to get it, set it up, we'll get with Sherry and Janie and we'll set it up.
I mean, that way they can explain it to the people, it ain't owed on us, you know.
Absolutely, if that's what you, you know, we could set up two or three of them, is there, CJ, is there a timeframe when you need to know on this? So we don't have to pull the strings on this just yet. Is that a fair statement? Now, we will have to, when that contract comes back, that will have to be acted on fairly quick, is that correct? The contract needs to be done quickly. But if you do the contract, you don't have the money to pay it. You all want to put a town meeting or two together, we've got staff to put it together, I don't know how that, how many people you'll get out to it, but if that's, you know, if you want to do that in your district, we'll get the staff to help you set it up, and we'll make available the folks from 911, I'm sure that you all will be happy to attend, and maybe do some pair points and explain it. So I'll be happy to make sure that the staff helps you set it up, and we'll make sure everybody's there to talk about it.
Well, if it has to be done quick.
The contract has to be done quick, the decision on putting it on the, putting a fee on the property taxes, we've got a little bit of time on that. Thing is, once that contract's signed, I understand what you're saying, the money ain't there to pay the full contract. But you don't, but... How much is in the 911 account?
They just reimbursed the fiscal court through June.
We have to float money for their salaries and expenses till the money comes into the account, and they reimburse the fiscal court, so you all don't have the money in there to even pay that.
It'd be hard to set it up that quick, but...
Yeah, it's going to be possible.
I'd say you'll hear from the people when the paper comes out, I mean... Let's see, let's see, I mean, if you want to set it up in the next week or so, you know, I'm going to be down, because I have that little procedure on my neck Tuesday.
I'm having a knee replacement.
So you're going to have two gimpie members of the fiscal court here for a few, for a couple of weeks. So, so the contract's got to be done by the end of the month, or state police wants dispatch. And we don't have the contract back yet, even though they want us to have it by the end of the month. That's really nice of them, appreciate that. And they sent us a bill, that we don't have the money to pay. So, and it may be that if that has to be paid before the end of the month, rather than subsidizing the Clerk's office, it might be that we have to find money to pay that bill, the balance of that bill, so we don't lose 911 service. It's a quarterly bill, right? But it's, when's it due?
You have to prepay, you have to prepay for the quarter.
So we got to prepay, and they don't have the money to pay it, so we may have to find the money to pay, to advance that for the 911 board. So put that on the agenda, if, are you all agreement, putting that on the agenda, that if, can you call on that contract, I mean, how can we, if we don't have a contract back, how can we make a payment on it?
The 911 board voted only to pay the amount that we've been paying each quarter, not to pay that full invoice.
Really?
Kidding, yesterday. It's still due, but we're not paying the full amount.
You'll pay what we've been paying? Till the contract's signed?
Yeah.
But then you're going to have to have the money to back up and pay the... So, so explain to me the wireless board real quick, how does that factor in? Yeah, we're not getting this.
The wireless board, like I was talking about, the state regulates the wireless money and everything, and the wireless board pays a percentage of the dispatch cost. That's, and it's not going to be...
Enough to pay the...
Yeah, it's not going to be enough to pay it. And with the increase, like I said, the wireless money that comes in is a, is sent us from state, and it's legislated how much we get, and that's sent us on a quarterly basis, and it's not being increased with KSP's increase either, so it's not going to be anymore.
CJ, is there a late fee on that? There's not, is there? I looked at that contract, but I don't...
No, there's not a late fee on it.
So, so Commissioner, if you want to set something up, we've got till the 17th when the next court meeting is, hopefully we'll have that contract back, Colonel Downey can look at it, if you want to try to set up a meeting up between now and then, we can try to set something up. Question is, do you want to set more than one up, or just one, where do you want to do it at, and how are we going to advertise it and get the word out? And we did that with solid waste, and what you had was a few people that just wanted to show up and complain, that didn't have any real facts to add to it.
Yeah.
And, you know, didn't have any solutions, they just wanted to complain about... Yeah, I mean, but if that's what, you know, if you want to do that, I'll be happy to help you get it set up.
I'll be, I'm more than willing to attend, I mean, just know when and where.
I think with those, we do those at the fire department for the solid waste.
We did one at Phelps, we did one, we did one at Phelps, we did one at Shelby Valley Fire Department, we did one at Belfry.
Yes.
We did one at East Ridge.
East Ridge.
And, and, you know, you could do one here at the courtroom if you want to get people to come into it, but hey, look, people have a right to voice their opinion, and we'll make that happen if that's what you want to do.
Well, that way they wouldn't think that it's us doing it.
Yeah, we don't set the rate, we don't set the rate.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
So...
And something with it, you were talking about wireless money, and CJ can, he can tell you about this, there are strings with the wireless money, there are only certain things that you can use with wireless money to pay for.
You can't buy, you can't do radios, you can't do communications or anything like that, wireless money is meant to just to help the dispatch center itself, that's all it's meant to do. And the mapping.
That's a whole nother, that's a whole nother subject, because the cell phone companies have fought any effort to put a 911 fee on cell phones.
Right, and...
They don't want to be in the process of collecting it.
And there's also, a lot of them that we were talking about earlier, there's also a lot of them that has a 911 fee on there that actually doesn't...
Your voice over IP stuff.
Voice over IP.
Your voice over IP stuff has a, if you will, if you will look at your bill on a detailed form, it has a 911 charge on it, but that is for, we don't receive that, that is what the phone company puts on there to make sure where it's voice over IP, that they route your call to the proper answering point.
So we get none of that?
We get none of that.
Well...
And, yeah, mapping and dispatch is about all you can use wireless funds for, and we, like I said, we get a small percentage, cell phone companies actually get back, the way that was originally worked up was, most of that money went back to the cell phone companies for them to be able to do the, for the Phase 2 wireless, for the GPS and everything, so when you dial a cell phone, and it shows up your exact point, not what tower you're calling from. So our hands are tied on that, there's nothing I can do with it.
If Commissioner Blackburn, or any members of the court want to set them up, Janie, would you help facilitate that, you and Sherry, and then...
Just let me know when and where.
We'll do it. You all can make that call, if you want to do it, we'll do it.
Okay.
All right, any other business, gentlemen?
Thank you.
All right, no other business, Nee, close us out with a word of prayer.
Let us bow for prayer. Dear heavenly Father Lord, Lord, we come to you now, Lord, first of all, Lord, thanking you so much for this and other day of life you've given us, and Lord, we're so thankful for this court, dear Lord, and the business that they conduct, dear Lord, that it is done for the betterment of the residents of Pike County, dear Lord, Lord, we ask that you bless each and every member of the court, and each and every citizen that's represented, dear Lord, and Lord, that your will will be done, and Lord, we pray, most of all, if there's one out there that doesn't know you as their personal Savior, maybe through something that's said or done, dear Lord, that they may come to know you before it's ever lasting too late. Lord, I just ask that you watch over us, lead, guide, and direct, and give us traveling mercies in your precious and holy name, amen.
Amen. Your motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Blackburn, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Scott, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Blackburn?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes, we are adjourned.